Oh, Margie's here.
Excellent. We need public comment time in the schedule.
I have not. At the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's here, but it's not in the the timing, so I'll address that when we start.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. This is a very well attended gathering.
Yes.
Okay, let me know when you're preparing.
Okay.
Give us just a few more moments and then we'll get underway.
We'll just be taking notes here.
Ready? Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas County Food Policy Council. For attendance, both to members and to participants and to members of the public. I would like to take a quick moment to, if you need to know, there are physical printouts of some of our materials this evening, particularly the agenda. I'd like to quickly go over the agenda. So we're going to open up for public comment at the beginning. We have a maximum of about three minutes per person. I understand that many people probably have lots of things they would like to say and or would like to know. There will be a question and answer for members of the Douglas County Food Policy Council after the Savion presentation. If there is time, time permitting, we could possibly reopen to public questions after that. But what I would recommend is if there is something you'd like to know or something you'd like to be covered in the presentation, please offer them soon at the beginning in the public comment. For the Savion presentation, we will also be going over the legislative statement put into Douglas County Food Policy Council to bring to the legislators. Any questions? Excellent. Okay, so we'll start with public comment. Is anyone so moved? Oh, I'm sorry. Still, this is this is meeting number two for me. So let's start with quorum. So we are at quorum. Do we need to list them out, Connie?
Incredibly.
Okay, so first I need a movement to approve the agenda.
A move that we approve the agenda.
We need to make some quick edits to the agenda. So the edits include, we need to acknowledge that, one, we have Aston Martin, not Trevon. And we also need a quick edit on Mackey Moore's name. There is an E in Mackey Moore. Connie, am I missing anything?
Um, no, unless anybody else sees anything else.
Anyone online see anything wrong with the agenda that needs amendment?
No, so approved here.
Excellent. Okay, moved by Dietrich, seconded by Margie.
Then Cody, we go around and and ask each person to say yay or nay.
Right, thank you.
You got it.
Members, let's start in the room. I'll start with Dietrich and then we'll do a yay or nay on the agenda.
Yay.
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 Yay. Yay. Online, please.
Yay. Yay. Yay.
The area and.
Yays all the way around.
Crystal?
I got a hit from.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. If you have a comment, please introduce yourself with your name. And if you are interested, please explain what your relationship to our local food system is, so we have an understanding of your stake in the process.
One clarification.
Yes.
Time limit for each comment?
Three minutes per comment is protocol.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Point of order, Margie. Is this general public comment not relative to things on the agenda?
Excellent question. The answer is sure, general. Was there something in particular you needed to, you wanted to?
No, I just wanted to have a clarification. So things on the agenda will have public comments at that agenda item.
Incorrect. So public comment first regarding anything on the agenda that you might be interested in. And so as earlier I said, there may be things on the Savion presentation you may be interested in having questions about. Please let us know.
I hear that first.
Will there be an opportunity for the public to submit written public comment to the Food Policy Council Special Committee? That we think we're going to.
Reform? Yes, sir.
Yeah, their working group.
Yes, the working group. So.
So after the presentation, members could or members of the public could submit questions or suggestions to the working group.
Right.
Correct. And I think it's also worth reiterating at this point that I think the character of what the Douglas County Food Policy will do with our recommendation is not going to be a yay or a nay vote. What it's going to be is we're going to take the information and the comments from the public and we will convince those into a memo to be given to the legislators. We are not going to give a recommendation thumbs up or thumbs down. So at the end of this meeting, if there's still time, I will try and make sure there is time.
Cody?
Yes.
Can I specify, there will be, we will vote yay or nay on something tonight, but we will be voting on whether the Food Policy Council will submit a sort of memo.
Right.
That memo itself won't won't be, would not be in support or in opposition. It would be kind of just neutral background.
Correct.
To Atlantic.
Yes.
Also, Connie, I think someone needs to be let in the Zoom waiting room.
I cannot see them.
Yeah.
You said that the memo will be given to the legislators.
I meant the, I meant the county commissioner. Thank you for that clarification also.
Karen, do you see someone in the waiting room? I don't see them.
Connie, Ashley is texting me saying she's been waiting, but maybe she has the wrong link. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Oh, let, could you actually let her know that we don't need her? I know she's sick and her kids are too.
I will.
Yeah, just she, she told me to let her know. I forgot. I'm sorry.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, I understand that you may have questions that are directly in response to the presentation, and if there is time, I will do my best to make room for that. But as Natalia said, there will also be opportunity to bring those questions to us or those comments to us afterwards.
After the meeting?
After the meeting, correct. Okay, so public comment. Is there anyone so moved to speak?
Um, I do have something. Um, you said to make for about anything about tonight, and if Savion would maybe go into a little more detail about how they're going to handle their noxious weed situation, what types of pesticides, things of that nature uh on their printout, it wasn't very specific.
Suzie, the the Food Policy Council members will have time to ask direct questions during on the agenda. There is some time allotted. And I was mentioning, if there's extra time, then the public might have an opportunity to ask directly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Of course. If there are no comments at this time, then we'll move ahead.
Oh, again, I think.
Go right ahead.
Waiting to jump in. I'm Karen Willie. I'm one of the county commissioners. I'm very glad for your service. You have the Food Policy Council. I'm kind of here to you know, listen and learn and kind of get as many chances at feedback as I can in addition to the memo that you're trying to send to us. Um, I also helped to write the solar renewable energy. Pretty proud of them. They may leave a lot of obstacles to control. Um, what happens with that intervention will have a lot to do with both the projects that are brought forward and also we as a community, what we ask from those projects. So I I just call on the Food Policy Council to uh be creative, to uh to ask for the future is that we need to see. So I think it's 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 a moral imperative that we consider renewable energy projects. That's part of our future. Um, each project in themselves will get considered individually with pros and cons and so much nuance and that goes along with it. Uh, but what I would just task, uh, I, you asked how how we're related to the food system. Also, I am an active farmer. I raise grass and beef cattle. I have for many years, uh, also sheep. I have a little orchard, variety of things. Um, get it, I'm I'm a soil health nerd. Like, this is what I'm passionate about is soil health. We need to move beyond talking about this kind of nineteen seventies mentality about soil, physical and chemical properties. Soils are not good or bad just based on that. It's the life in the soil. It's how we treat the the life in the soil. That's the conversation you need to have on everything agriculture and everything food related, but that's the conversation that needs to be at the key of conversations about agricultural takes uh growing food along with solar projects. They take a lot of land. We need to honor that land. Uh, and this group will have a lot of power to kind of help form what that looks like. Is it land access for beginning farmers? Um, is it, what kind of food are we going to grow there? What kind of biology are we going to support? Uh, those are really key issues for, I think, all of the commissioners have have expressed that. Um, but I I'm very curious to hear, you know, what we have, what we come back from the Food Policy Council. So thank you for.
Mm hmm. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Karen.
My name is Lawrence Law. I live across the road from what's going to be the solar array that's proposed. And myself, I'm, I'd be blunt about it. I think it's ridiculous to put this where they want to put it in some of the prime soil in the county, especially in Grant Township. Seeing as how the land use priorities for the state level here say that conservation of high quality land and agriculture are supposed to be that's conserve, not use. This area is going to be taken away. You're going to use almost seven hundred acres of prime farm ground for solar panels. When Evergy could put these panels somewhere else, they could put them on buildings here in town. They could put them on residential buildings. They could put them on warehouses. But Evergy will not allow individuals to sell back more than one percent of the electricity back to Evergy. It's ridiculous. And I I I'm just standing against this project where it's being proposed. Not, I'm not against solar. It's just silly to put it where it's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Stacy Welling and I live on my neighbor's road on fourteen eighteen road. So I will have, I'm directly near the solar project. I think it is also a poor spot for the project. Uh, I'm not against agricultural takes. I'm not against solar. I think that we need both of those things. I think that we have to look to renewables. I'm in agreement on that. I think it is a very poor place to put such a such a thing and to use up that kind of acreage. It will be taken out of the food production system for it. And there, there's a twenty five year lease, then a lot of kinds of different young rich releases. There's also an option for them to buy. So I'm not seeing that whatever be a thing that they would give up to protect the food production ever once they establish you know, all the infrastructure would be financially silly to do that quite frankly. So I don't see it ever going back to pot ground. I think there are much better places that this could be put. Solar is great. We should have it, but not in the River Valley that has the best soil. I think it's a terrible trade off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Short. Um, and I live in the township near Ritzler, Arango. Um, I'm just curious to hear specifically. Um, the CUP asks for, I believe, a significantly shorter length of time for the project to be to exist on the land than the actual length of land leases. And I'd like to hear specifically what are the lease terms? I mean, especially some of the longest term ones. I've heard things like four years. Um, that's two generations of farming. And I know that there are auctions to buy on some of the acreage, and I'd like to hear um how much of the ground is covered by least of the last option box.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just put my two cents in as as former county commissioner and one of the folks who brought the idea forward of having the Food Policy Council in Kansas City, which was the first land in the state. And ended up being real helped many other food policy councils to start with. With the original founding idea of the Food Policy Council, along with the Heritage Conservation Council and other other what the council is doing, there's been an effort to elevate um communities' sense of importance of prime soils and to try and mitigate efforts to develop that soil. Which is uniquely valuable than being uh used in its highest 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 and best use, wherein it is used to develop the and so the the like, when a city and county ended up being becoming a joint having joint ordinance to join the city and county's Food Policy Council effort. Um, one of the founding goals were for agricultural producers, food entrepreneurs, food set, food workers to thrive in our regional economy. And as the cities grow, to prioritize natural resource conservation and maintain working lands to promote soil health. And um, I guess my sense of this is working lands are lands in agricultural production and the riverbank lands, whether you do or don't buy class one to soil categories, whether they're outdated or they are some of the most productive lands around. And to remove those working land in agricultural production in in to replace the soil farm is not farm, I mean, it's not agriculture. It's soil to commercial industrial scale. Soil, we use energy hub. And so I just, I guess I would just ask in this moment that the Food Policy Council are be back to the county's original goal, which was to have it connect the fact that food comes from productive land, working agricultural land. Farms need that connection with organizations like the Food Policy Council. Farms and farmers need to be moved up. Um, so I appreciate the work you do on that. And I guess I I ask you to just really honor the original idea that brought the Food Policy Council about. One of the reasons to, you know, deserve protection. What, what should.
Code.
Thank you.
Cody, could I? Yeah, could you just ask people who are farther from the microphone to speak up a tiny bit? It was a little hard to hear for me.
In case you couldn't hear, some of you at the farthest end of the room, if you could speak up a little bit, use your theater voice. That'd be very helpful. Okay, any other comments before we move to the legislative statement?
I see Karen looking at me. I'll chime in real quick.
Okay.
My name's Scott and I was asked by Tyler to be here this evening as an agricultural producer in the area of who's down in Spence River.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess. My name's Joe Carpenter. I was on the planning commission and chaired the subcommittee that drafted the solar regulations that Savion has to comply with in order to move forward and under which the planning commission and the county commission will evaluate the cost project. I don't I'm not seen all the weekends. I have no position on it. I'm just here at Tyler's request so I can explain some of the background thought processes of that subgroup that went into drafting those regulations. So kind of a technical background that, and you have Mary Miller on here. It was the staff, the liaison that actually wrote the language that we played with and modified as we struggled with a lot of very challenging and competing values um in the county to come up with what what are currently there and have options. So make use of me when you want to ask questions, how we did, why we I guess Vegas was how we ended up pushing most of these against the farm land. So we'll get there if I can help with that.
Thank you. Okay. If that is it for public comment, then we'll move on to the legislative statement. Presenters, I appreciate your patience. As we go through the public comment, it is nice to be able to engage everyone who's here. Okay.
Erin?
Yes, so um for context, there was a meeting uh, I think it was last week with the some of the Food Policy Council leadership and some working um group chairs to talk about our submissions to the county commission for their um full legislative statement for twenty twenty four. And I um put together a draft based on one the the kind of thing that we had put together last year and the county's legislative statement from last year. I kind of copied and pasted that over and then edited it based on the conversation that we had last week and some input from Connie, um, because I had some questions. So an overview, um, these top three Farm to School Cottage Foods and Statewide Food and Farm Policy Council were recommendations that were from the Kansas Food Action Network last year. Um, I would guess that they might also be this year, but who knows? Um, so um, so increasing funding for Farm to School Cottage Foods, making sure that regulations are kind of in a clear place and understandable for everyone who might be affected by them. And um for Statewide Food Farm and Policy Council, we support creating one. Land access was something that was brought up at our meeting last week. Um, and I, it was suggested that we support some specific language in the Farmers Increasing Land Access Security and Opportunities Act um to help provide resources and incentives for young, rich generation of BIPOC farmers. Food Systems Entrepreneurship, um, this might have to be adjusted a little bit in coordination with other county folks, um, but just kind of ensuring that under any workforce development recommendations, food systems entrepreneurship is included. And then we had a discussion about definitions um in food sales tax policy, specifically talking about what count, quote unquote, counts as food, especially for value added products. Um, and I think Ashley gave the example of, you know, if you kind of make something from your produce and it's two things combined into a jar, it then doesn't count as quote food um under some some tax policy. And then we talked a little bit about agricultural takes, and this might be something that the rest of the council might have some edits for me on. I don't have a ton of um, understanding of it myself. Um, so if we need to kind of adjust that language, I left it pretty vague. So that's sort of the food system aspect of it. And then for social services, this is again similar to what we had last year with just a little bit more detail. To indicate that it's the federal government whose changes to WIC we are, you know, supporting. Oh, Ashley says that regarding the definitions for food sales tax, it's still food, but it doesn't qualify for the reduced reduced food sales tax. However, if you buy the same thing wholesale and resell it, it does qualify for the reduced tax. Thank you for that specification, Ashley. Um. Yeah, so WIC SNAP, protecting access to SNAP and hopefully strengthening access. School meals, um, supporting school meals for USC four nine seven students and encouraging any policy that helps more students across the state eat school meals. And then supporting efforts to expand Medicaid. That is just a copy over from the county's twenty twenty three legislative priorities. So I am happy to answer any questions or um if there are suggested edits, Connie, that I don't know, those maybe I can kind of do them in real time. I have this document pulled up on my computer as well.
Yeah, Margie has a question.
Yes, thank you. Um, just a moment. So, yeah, thank you for this work. Um, this, this is pretty, pretty good list of things. Um, so I was just wondering though about the process of, since it's my first kind of go around, last year I was under just absorbing what's going on with y'all. So here I'm coming around. Okay, now I'm trying to catch up with you on this process for submitting this. And wondering if this is a draft, is this automatically given that we're including a support of state level agricultural takes policy recommendations?
I think that's for you, Connie.
This is a draft and this is the list that came up from the meeting that we had with all working chairs. Uh, I believe Natalia was working on this item and um we don't need to, you don't need to have it here. Um, it's still in the making and also administration is going to look at this and then this is just the beginning of the work. This doesn't, you can, you're, since this particular topic is unfinished, uh, we did not get to it. Um, maybe the best would be not to think of that.
I think if, particularly since we are trying to understand the nature of how and where and when agricultural takes regulation, well, the, let's go back. Um, the Food Policy Council has already made a comment on the agricultural take regulations as a whole, correct? The county.
For the county.
So there is that. So there has been a statement made by the Food Policy Council regarding agricultural takes in general. I would like to point out that we are talking about now a specific agricultural takes installation. And so I think another thing that we'll be doing this entire evening is trying to separate out this particular installation from the regulations in general. That said, it's also worth pointing out that this, all of the recommendations that we make do not automatically make their way to the agenda. Do not make their way to the legislative statement. Is that correct, honey?
Yes, and also some of these items were pulled from the meeting we had with the Kansas Food Action Network with, which convenes about thirty food councils across the state. Um, and unfortunately, they're going to have their voting meeting for their policy platform on the sixteenth of this month. So we're a bit ahead of schedule. Usually we try to do the vote with Kansas Food Action Network first, and then we do the Douglas County Legislative Recommendations, but we're kind of in a weird schedule. So what we did this this round is use the notes, uh, as you can find on the package. I have the paper copy here with the notes from the Kansas Food Action Network Policy Platform and inform that there, that those kinds of policy council um is not the only one interested in this topic. I also shared the I will hold the sticky notes on.
To the jam board.
The jam board that shared um that other food policy councils across the state have this interest. So another reason why this line is not completed is because we have not convened with the other councils uh to to complete that line. So that will be on the sixteenth of the month. And Natalia?
Uh, would it be appropriate for me to suggest an additional bullet point?
What do you suggest?
I suggest that after the first three, that we add a statement saying we support the present preservation of class one, class two, and other highly productive soils throughout the state for agricultural use. Because if we don't preserve those soils for agricultural use, then we will not have the land to for young farmers to have access to it. And that's a very important, preserving that land is very important to a state response to climate change.
There are two considerations to make. There are two considerations to make at this point. One is we've still not completely addressed Margie's question, which is about the agricultural takes bullet. And then two regarding your new bullet, it is worth pointing out that I believe that that is under the food system plan. However, that doesn't mean that putting it into our legislative priorities is bad. However, we might want to be specific under what, and this is what we'll be working and learning about tonight is what counts as adequate preservation and production. What is the highest possible use of these soils? And so I am interested to see how that bullet point develops. But I'm not positive it needs to be specifically enumerated, but I might be wrong, and that's why we bring it in front of the full council. And so first, Margie, to your question, I think. Because we are specifically dealing with agricultural takes right now. I think it would be worthwhile, it might even be worthwhile to put a conditional based off of recommendations that we develop. Tonight, or if we approve the building of the working group, what that working group recommends. Because then in the continued conversation with, if it may becomes a legislative priority, then we will have distinct recommendations to make. About how agricultural takes become a statewide priority.
So.
Does that help you?
Yeah, I think what I'm trying to distinguish in this statement that um. We're clarifying that, oh, while we've approved the. Already presented. Uh statutes or recommendations for agricultural takes, we're trying to say, yes, there might be a place for this industrial use of land. But we're not specifically endorsing any particular project within. Those statutes or within that policy, is that?
I think that's a real valuation.
So. So this, this document that we're looking at now would be state and to a certain degree, federal legislative priorities for the county. That said, I think that if we don't have anything more specific when it comes to agricultural takes, just saying that we support. State level policy recommendations is pretty vague and I don't know if it's. Worth having it in there.
Yeah.
From my experience with lobbyists, though, if we don't have a statement, they can't talk about it at all. So. If we want them to lobby for it at all, like we have to have something or against it, I guess, I should, so leaving it vague leaves that. A little bit of leeway later. If there's no statement, they can't speak to how Douglas County feels about it at all.
Natalia has something to add.
Yeah, um, I wonder if it would help if we clarified that statement on agricultural takes. To say that we support state level agricultural takes policy similar to. The policies developed in Douglas County. So we're taking what we have done in Douglas County and suggesting that the legislature. Carry that forward and spread it through the state as a model for the rest of the state. And that was also where I was going with the preservation of soils, not relative, nothing relative to the. Project that we're going to hear about later, but. So that they don't become warehouses and.
And distribution.
Suburbs and, you know, all the other things that good flat ground. Want people want to use it for. We need to keep that ground uh statewide.
So far, I am in support of Natalia's suggestion, which is instead of adding the third bullet point, which would clarify and. Bring out the class, class two soils, what we do is we, in addition to the agricultural takes bullet point, it says. Similar to the policies developed in Douglas County, which will then cover what we are doing, the work we're doing tonight, and again, if. The working group is approved, working group and the recommendations in the memo that the working group develops. So to as out of respect for our presenter's time, I'd like someone, if if we are ready. If someone would like to make a movement to either approve or otherwise, if someone also is concerned and thinks that something needs to continue to develop, please say so.
Cody, so you're just to specify, so you're saying instead of a third bullet point being added or a second. You're saying that under the current agricultural takes bullet points, we would add. What Natalia just suggested, but there would not be a separate bullet point about preserving class two and class one soils.
Correct, we are here to add context to our recommendations or what we recommend.
I think two things are being conflated here.
Please continue.
I think what the. And I apologize for. The confusion. What I just heard you say was that. You thought we should add similar to the Douglas.
The the what the policies develop and being developed and developed in Douglas.
Yeah, to the agricultural tanks.
Yes, what would you prefer?
I think that is. A good suggestion.
Okay.
I will, I will so move if that's.
Wait a second.
Is there something that's being conflated with that you're concerned?
And as a totally separate discussion. I would like to suggest that we have a bullet point in here. That encourages the state to look at the overall issue. Of preserving class one and two and other high value agricultural soils.
For agricultural use.
Agricultural use. So that the state does not lose that resource that we in Douglas County have. Taken many steps to protect over the last. Ten fifteen years through the Northeast Sector Plan and other long range planning documents. So again, it's parallel to the agricultural takes that. With the agricultural takes, I'm suggesting that we tell the state. To follow what we did and do it statewide and then as a separate issue, I'm suggesting that. We tell the state to do what we have done about protecting our class one soils and do that statewide.
Thoughts among the council?
So move, I would second that.
I like that.
There's two motions on the table.
We currently, I will retract the first motion, which, or at least the first suggestion, so currently my understanding is we have a single motion. Would it, is it considered a single motion or a double motion to add two different bullet points? Does anyone know?
Depends on how she phrased it.
Yeah.
My current understanding is we have a single motion to add two bullet points. One bullet point is to make a recommendation. Do you have specific language so we can put it into the plan?
Yeah, we support the preservation of class one, class two, and other highly productive soils. Throughout the state for agricultural use.
Agricultural use, Natalia?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is a.
And that could potentially include agricultural takes, it's not excluding it. Because it is agriculture, uh, but it's addressing the need that we need to preserve. And we definitely don't want warehouses.
Understood. So that would be an additional bullet point and then for agricultural takes, we would add comma. So it would read, we support state level agricultural, agricultural take policy recommendations, comma, similar to policies developed in Douglas County. So that is the move, that is the motion, is to approve a new bullet point and amend the agricultural takes bullet point. Do I have, does that clarify?
Yeah, it clarifies, but I make a request that we address them as two separate portions.
I would agree with that.
I'm happy to separate that into two different motions. So first motion would be to amend the agricultural takes bullet point. Do I have, do I have a motion to approve? So. Do I have a second?
Second.
First is Tyler, second is uh.
Natalia.
Natalia was first.
Does to Robert.
Okay, so I will now move around the room and then through the digital. I need, yay, you're next, yay.
No, Tyler.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Margie?
Are you going through the room? Sorry.
Uh, we went to the room, we are now in Zoom.
Okay, I'm abstaining on that one.
Earth.
Um, yay.
Um, I'm going to abstain on the votes related to the legislative agenda because. This could be a conflict of interest with my day job with, in which I also like lobby and have a legislative agenda, so with that background, I've seen.
All of the names.
Mm hmm. Um, I do think because we have two abstainers, we are below quorum.
Are you not going to ask for people on Zoom or are we just supposed to chime in?
I'm going to ask, that's my mistake. Margie abstained, Erin abstained, Ashley?
Yay.
Crystal?
Yay.
And Suzie?
Yay.
Two, three, four. Six, seven, eight, we're one below for two abstainers.
Is that how abstained, abstentions are handled?
I don't know.
It's just their vote is, I think we met quorum as a meeting, but just because their vote is a non-vote.
Thank you. Okay.
I think.
Okay. Then we have eight yays and two abstains. Okay, then we need to regard the second motion. The second motion is to add a bullet point. Natalia, would you read it out one more time?
I'll let you read it.
Okay, we support the preservation of class one, class two. Agricultural soils and other high, highly productive soils throughout the state for agricultural use. Do I need to read that one more time because I turned it into salad? Okay, so first I'll go around the room, Dietrich.
Yay.
Nay. Tyler. Yay.
Yay.
Ben?
Give me a.
Thanks.
Yay.
Yay, um, okay, now we'll go online, let's start with Ashley.
Yay.
Margie, are you still abstaining?
No, yay.
Erin?
Abstained.
Heard. Crystal?
Yay.
Suzie?
Yay.
And the eyes have it. We did the crystal, yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
I'm super sorry, I think it'll be quick. I've talked with you on email about one more bullet point that I'd like to see on there. That would be that we support policies that support new farmers to learn about or help existing farmers convert to more sustainable agriculture. We don't have anything about sustainable agriculture and certainly about farmers.
Ben, would you read that out one more time? There is, there is the suggestion to add one more bullet point and Ben is going to read it.
Matt, either. Uh, we support policies that support new farmers to learn about or help existing farmers convert to more sustainable agricultural systems.
Do I hear a movement?
Is Ben making the movement?
I think that's.
Okay. Ben makes a motion, Dietrich says.
Okay.
We're going to go around one more time, Dietrich?
Yay.
Tyler?
Yay.
Ben?
Yay.
Natalia?
Yay.
Cody, yay. Uh, Ashley?
Yay.
Margie?
Yay.
Erin?
Abstained.
Thank you. Suzie?
Yay.
Crystal?
Yay.
Great, thank you. Okay. Okay, we are going to move on. Thank you again, presenters. We're going to start with our learning session, we're going to start with the planning processes with Mary Miller. Mary, are you ready?
Hello, yes, I am.
Thank you.
Briefly. Do we not need to vote on the entire legislative priorities document?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
We could be asked the entire legislative priority.
Thank you, Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dietrich. One more time from the top, Dietrich.
Yay.
Tyler?
Yay.
Ben?
Yay.
Natalia?
Yay.
Cody, yay. Ashley?
Yay.
Margie?
Yay.
Erin?
Abstained.
Heard, thank you. Crystal?
Yay.
Suzie?
Yay.
All right, there, concluded, Mary.
Are you ready for me now?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I was just going to give you a very brief kind of an overview of the conditional use permit process. And then take questions if you have any. I don't know how familiar any of you are with this. A conditional use is a use that might be appropriate in certain zoning districts and it might not be. Or it might be that it is appropriate as long as we develop certain conditions. And that's why we have quite a few uses in the county that are called conditional uses. And they come through the conditional use permit process that allows the county commission to decide one way or the other, should they be allowed? And what conditions do they need, if any? So with a solar farm or a solar energy conversion system, the actual word, and. There's a little bit more process than with others, um, the solar energy conversion systems and the wind energy. Uh, they both have to end cell towers, they all have to send out notice before they submit the application. The reason being, these are very complicated projects, so we want the public to get more information earlier on. Rather than them trying to catch up, usually we notify people twenty days before the planning commission meeting. And if you have a very complicated project, a lot of times the public just feels lost, they're not able to catch up and understand the whole project. So notice goes out um and uh is mailed to the public within one mile. Of the subject property and then the application is submitted to planning. And um, planning begins even before this with a pre-application meeting, we meet with the applicants. And the purpose of that is to identify if there's any challenges we can spot. Um, anything they should change, if we see properties that just aren't going to work, we give them advice early on. Also, if we have a application comes in and we just don't think it's workable, we let them know, so we have quite a few projects to just drop off. Or get revised, um, this allows us to give people early input and also people don't go through the whole process if they have a good feeling it's going to get denied. And so we don't have to take a lot of recommendations for denial to the planning commission because of this early work we do at the applicants. Once an application is submitted, then that gets distributed to our plan review committee. And we have members of the public that receive the mailed notice, they contact us and then they also receive the plans and the materials, so they can look it over from the very beginning. Then we collect comments, we take the comments we get from our plan review committee. With solar and with wind, there's always more people than our standard committees, um, just sent to a wide range of people, we got a lot of comments. And we get those comment letters and send them to the applicant. If members of the public provided comments. Um, that we wanted to provide on to the applicant, you know, questions or concerns, we include those in our review. And then the applicant will provide revised plans or response to comments, not every comment. They don't have to revise the plans for every comment, sometimes they disagree or they have additional information. And a lot of times we've just asked for information, and so we go back and forth like this, exchanging comments and revisions until. I believe we're at a point where the major issues have been resolved. And it's on the planning commission agenda. You want to take the item to the planning commission without a lot of loose strings, without us arguing over how high fences should be, where should fences be? Um, a lot of those small details, because the planning commission's job is to make a land use determination. And rather than how tall fences should be as a rule, they want to make a determination, is this a good use for this location? And in our staff reports, we review the CUP with the golden factors and with review criteria. And so things we look at very importantly are, is it compatible with the zoning and land uses nearby? Is it compatible with the character of the area? We look at, does it comply with the recommendations in the comprehensive or the area plan? And then there are other items we look at, um. These are kind of things from the legal cases, uh, how long has a land been vacant, you know, if it's been vacant for a long time, that's a good reason to recommend to change. Is a land suitable, is it suitable for the uses that it could do now without the CUP? And is it suitable for the uses with the CUP? And we want to look at what kind of detrimental impacts could there be? And are there ways we can adjust those, reduce the impact? Or is the impact to the point that we would recommend not having in certain locations or to recommending denial? So that goes to the planning commission uh, with our recommendations. And staff will make a presentation, then the applicant. They'll have up to 10 minutes to make a presentation. Then the members of the public, it'll open the public hearing. Members of the public will have up to three minutes each to uh, provide their input. We always recommend sending written communications because it's just hard to say a lot in three minutes. So if uh, if you get your letters in before the deadline, those get included in the packet. That way the commissioners get your full comments, but they also get to hear directly from you at the meeting. And then the applicant will get a chance at the end to respond to concerns that were raised during the public hearing. And after that, they'll close it. The planning commission will then deliberate. They won't take any more comments, but they might ask questions. So if you've made a comment and they want that some more information on it, they may ask you to clarify a comment, or they may ask staff or the applicant. And then the planning commission will vote, and they have several options. They can vote to send it back to staff. If there's been some questions raised and they want more information, they can defer action and send it back to staff with direction to look into it further. They can recommend approval. They can recommend approval with conditions, or they can recommend denial. And then that will move on to the county commission. And there's a 14-day mandatory waiting period between the planning commission and the county commission uh, with public hearing items. And this is a timeframe where members of the public that are opposed uh, could develop protest petitions. And if a protest petition is submitted within the 14 days, it would take a unanimous vote of the planning commission to approve it, regardless of what the planning commission had said. The county commission uh, would need a unanimous vote to approve it. And so that's basically the process. Now, once it gets to the county commission, they can return it. Uh, sometimes uh, comments will come up or they'll have questions. They may want to return it to the planning commission for questions. Um, in some cases, they returned it to staff and just wanted staff to work on it. Um, so they don't have to take action on it that night. They usually do, but they can return it. And they can re vote to accept the recommendations of the planning commission, or they can vote differently. That just takes a simple majority. But like I said, if there is a protest petition, that does take a unanimous vote. So that's a pretty general overview of what our process is. And um, if you have any questions or if there's anything you want to know more about, just let me know.
Do council members have any question for Mary Miller?
I do.
Please go ahead.
Um, and this may not exactly be a question for Mary. Um, so I apologize, but you could you talked a little bit about like the conditional use and the zoning is going to change. So like if this land and the example we're talking about goes from ag to a solar, large-scale sol- industrial solar project, the zoning is going to change from ag to commercial or whatever that would be. Is that correct?
No, the, the zoning stays the same. So a conditional use is a use that we would say could be appropriate in this zoning district, perhaps for a limited amount of time or with conditions. But we don't want to change the zoning.
And the reason- Hard to change back, right?
A- and zoning allows a wide range of uses. It of conditional use permit is the exact same process as a rezoning. But it's very narrow. You only get that one use and it might be conditioned. But if you've rezoned, then all of a sudden, you know, if you had to rezone to an industrial district, all of a sudden you could have gas stations and, and as you mentioned earlier warehouses, you know, a lot of uses. And it's harder to apply the conditions. There's not that provision where you can say it could be here but not there. And so um, conditional use permits are a much more popular and effective tool just because they can be focused so strongly. And you can apply conditions and it's only one use. So the applicant goes through all the work of rezoning. But when they get done, it's a very narrow, usually a time limited approval of one specific use.
Dietrich?
For solar installations, the conditional use permit limited in its duration.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
Is it limited in this duration for the conditional use permit that would apply to a solar installation?
Yes, it is. There's a maximum timeframe allowed in the code of 25 years. It's possible to apply lesser timeframes. We've only done one solar farm in the county so far and we recommended the full 25 years. The intent of that is to allow us time to look them over. You know, once they go through the 25 years, if they still want to carry on, they need to submit a new CUP application. That way we can evaluate, how did things work? Was your agrivoltaics appropriate? Has technology changed or you need to change? So it gives us a chance not to have a 50-year um, facility that doesn't change. But every 25 years, it would be up for like review, although it's actually a whole new application.
Follow-up?
Dietrich, would you follow up?
I understand that the conditional use permits require the uninstallation of a solar uh, facility if the conditional use permit ends at 25 years and is not extended.
Yes. Yes, at the end of 25 years, the applicant has the option to apply for another CUP. And that would go through the process. If that's denied or if they don't apply for a new one, then in the standards, there is a decommissioning set of standards, how to decommission it, how to reclaim it, so that it's returned back to its original, pretty near to the original state. Sometimes the landowners want to keep some of the access roads. Uh, but that's all written up in the plan. There's a decommissioning and reclamation plan with the application.
Mary, does a C, does the existence of a CUP allow for other applicants to point to the, their existence and go, there is a conditional use permit already similar to what I'm suggesting? And does that weigh whether or not their conditional use permit gets consideration or how it gets considered?
No, every conditional use permit is a specialized item, so it does not set a precedent. You can have a, uh, an event center is a really good example because it's not a solar farm, but you can have an event center in one place. And someone can come up and say, I want an event center next door. It would have to be evaluated for all the same reasons and make sure it doesn't impact. Sometimes having two uses side by side might have more impact on neighbors. But um, no, uh, CUP does not set a precedent.
And as a follow-up, is there any monitoring mechanism for a CUP?
Yes, CUPs are highly monitored. They're um, the zoning and codes office is our enforcement arm. So when the CUP goes through, the one we had before it had like 25 conditions. And mostly we take the standards in the regulations and we make those conditions and put them on the CUP. Um, just regular standards. And then we also apply new standards. And so the zoning and codes office is responsible for enforcing those. Let's say they are missing some of those. The first thing they do is work with them on compliance to bring them into compliance. If that doesn't work, if there's some issue that's just not getting resolved with any CUP, then it can be taken to the board of county commissioners. Um, that had takes a public hearing, but they can consider the suspension, revocation, or um, there's another thing, but they can consider either suspending or revoking the conditional use permit. And we had that with a quarry one time. There were some compliance issues. And it went to the county commission and they did a consent agenda and gave them two years because it was actually the former operator, but it gave him two years to bring things into compliance. And the, the new applicant was able to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do I have any questions in Zoom via chat? Or raise your hand? I've got one from Natalia in the room.
How frequently would monitoring be done of this particular project?
Monitoring during um, construction. That's when most of the activity happens. It would be done during construction. Um, with some quarries, we have one-year reviews, two-year reviews, five-year reviews. Um, we're just constantly in a state of reviewing because with, you know, with a quarry, there's a lot of activity. With a solar farm, it's very static. Once it's constructed, things don't move. You know, not much happens. They do have to make their reports. So if a um, solar panel is damaged or other items, then they report. Also, we go by complaints. So um, with our solar farm that we had, we've received complaints that the trucks were driving before they got the dust pallet of down, and that was just a timing situation. The township wasn't ready to put the dust pallet of down. So zoning and codes worked with the applicant. And they were able to get the dust pallet of down and take care of the issue. So neighbor complaints is a, a principal source of that monitoring. If there's an issue that's creating a problem, but once it's installed, there isn't a lot of um, changes going to happen on the solar facility.
Mary, I might point out in that this particular development, uh, it is, the idea we're also talking about is agrivoltaics. And so the agrivoltaics, how does that change what is considered static in this instance?
And, and that's a great question. You know, agrivoltaics are very new and we're all kind of excited about them, but it's hard to say what's going to happen. So we don't have our conditions written yet. I would like to see us do five-year reviews of where are they in agrivoltaics? What has happened? It's a learning experience and that way we can look and see what was successful, what wasn't. Uh, what would the county commission like to see? Um, it's more of an update from the applicant and provided on, you know, the once it's approved and they're doing agrivoltaics and, and they're doing what they've promised. You know, that we wouldn't increase their requirements, but I think having the five-year or some sort of uh, regular reviews so that we can monitor and make sure they are doing the grazing. Um, we don't regulate agriculture, so we wouldn't come in and say what, where you need to graze or, you know, get into that kind of detail, but we would like to have reporting to know that the agrivoltaics, if they are working and hopefully they're expanding, you know, they may start out small. The goal would be for that to, to increase, so they're able to um, do agrivoltaics over more and more of the facility.
Thank you. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll turn to Zoom again. Is there anyone in Zoom who has a question? Okay, anyone in the room? Uh, for uh, policy member, policy council members? Then I'd like to give some time to move on to Savion.
I'm sorry, Cody, I do have a question. One question, sir. It was actually a, um, a tale on the previous question, I think, as far as having um, this, the precedent for the agrivoltage. So it's not necessarily encoded in the particular plan of the project to require Evergy to adopt agrivoltage. I mean agricultural practices under the solar panels. Is that correct? They're not going to be enforced to do that. So that was my understanding.
Yeah, the standards that we wrote encourage, strongly encourage agrivoltaics, because when we wrote them, we realized how new agrivoltaics were. We had a study session with the county commission and the county commission has come out both in the study session and with the review of the solar farm that went through, saying they very strongly encourage agrivoltaics. As a matter of fact, if a project came through without agrivoltaics, it may not be you know, possible to move forward. So while we aren't requiring it, it is very strongly encouraged. Now, the applicant has provided an agrivoltaic plan and they are going to be doing agrivoltaics. So when that's included in the approved plan, it is required. Uh, we, we aren't um, we aren't going to go out and monitor their grazing, but we do want them, if they say they're going to do grazing, that that needs to be done. So once it's in the plan and the plan is approved, then it is required.
Well, the plan, as I understood it in meeting with Savion, was that they had those uh, descriptions of what they were going to do for vegetation management, et cetera, and might talk about the grazing, but that as this project is then handed over to Evergy, it's out of their hands. And so here's the catch 22 that the county commission or the planning commission will be voting on a plan written by Savion, who will then be handing it off to Evergy. And then there's no way to ensure any of Savion's great plans will actually be put into place.
Yeah, actually, the plan itself, the plan itself is the assurance. The plan will be stamped, signed. Uh, there'll be a resolution filed. It'll have the conditions. So the plans will show agrivoltaics. So if it goes to Evergy and Evergy doesn't do any agrivoltaics, then they're in violation of the conditional use permit. So I'm sure Savion and Evergy are working together because whatever gets approved for Savion, it doesn't change if it changes to Evergy. You know, if they start taking it over.
Okay.
But to clarify, currently, there is no monitoring arm that will monitor their agriculture because you don't do that.
We can monitor the agrivoltaics. We can make sure they're blending agriculture and the solar panels. But it is not the county's job to come out and say, we think you should be planting soybeans because we're just not allowed to regulate agriculture. But we can say, you need to be planting crops. So it, it's a fine line. If you get too far, then we've run astray of the count, the state, which does not allow us to regulate agriculture. The agrivoltaics, we can require them. And when they put it in their plan and they say, we are going to raise bro crops or we are going to raise soybeans, then that's their agrivoltaic plan. And that we can enforce. We can say you you said you're gonna be doing soybeans. Now, if they come in and say they did not turn out to work, so we're going to do some other plant, that's a very minor change. That can be adjusted, but we would keep on, you know, in track with them.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so basically you're saying that you, the county can monitor that they are doing it, but not how they are doing.
I, I think that's right. Yeah, we'd be looking at where do you say you're going to have agrivoltaics? We would go out and look, are there agrivoltaics there? We're not going to come out and say we think you're grazing your sheep wrong, where you show us you're grazing. And that's, that's a kind of a, a fine line, because we don't go in and tell farmers how to farm, but in agrivoltaics, we can tell them, you need to be doing your farming activity here. And it need, you know, it needs to be resulting in something.
Okay, I'd probably like to take one or two more questions for Mary before I move on, so Savion can then alley-oop and do their presentation. Room? Zoom? Okay, thank you very much, Mary. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So Ashton's gonna share his screen real quick, but for those of you who haven't met me, my name is Brianna Baca and I'm the development director at Savion, um, and the director over this project. Savion is outside of Kansas City. Ashton, introduce yourself.
Yeah, Ashton Martin, senior permitting and environmental manager for Savion.
Um, so yeah, next slide. Uh, I'm gonna run through these pretty quick because we only have 20 minutes. Um, this is about Savion. These slides will be available to everyone on Food Policy Council afterwards. We have this PDF. Um, this just says about Savion, our history, how large we are. We are based in Kansas City, Missouri. Um, we do have a local office in Lawrence, though we did open 618 in New York, so it's not on this slide, but I threw that out there. Um, and just a little bit about us. Going, we have over 200 employees. This is our portfolio. This is actually from last year. We're getting updated sites here this week, so pretty excited about that. Um, this just says, uh, this is the history of our company. So we have solar and development, we have energy storage and development, and this is what we've constructed and have operating. And this is another slide that tells you all about our operating projects, where they are, their size, when they came online. Um, so you guys can take time to review those later if you want. Um, just a little bit more about us, who we work with, keep going. So what is utility scale solar? So what does it look like? Um, not everybody has had a chance to seen, see a project like this. These are not currently in Kansas. The largest project in Kansas is 20 megawatts currently, and our project is bigger than that. So what does it look like? So I wanted to have a couple pictures showing you all uh, examples of what these look like from the ground level, from up above. Um, just to get some ideas, these are projects that we built in other states. So what are the benefits of solar project? What, why is this a good thing? Um, it is an economic development. We, it does have new tax revenue for host townships and school districts. There's little to note. We call it a silent revenue generator. We aren't putting stress on the school districts. We aren't bringing in a ton of long-term jobs, but we are bringing in a new tax revenue and a new tax space. It also allows for electrical diversification of generation. So Evergy can run solar as well as coal. Um, it also is environmentally friendly. It is renewable. Once it's there, it's clean. There's no cooling water required. There's no water required, actually. Um, unless you add in the agrivoltage, then we need to water everything. Um, but it also is energy security, like I said, so. Um, but it also is energy security, like I said, so. What, what project details? Where are we? What are we talking about? So this project is proposed to be a hundred and fifty-nine megawatts. It's about one mile north of Lawrence, sorry. Uh, I'll. It is also proposed that that Evergy owns and operates the project pending regulatory approval. So we are working with Evergy, we are partnered with Evergy. Evergy is in lockstep with us along the way. Um. Yeah, they they understand everything we've applied for and they've approved it before we submitted anything, so. They've agreed that this project is something that they want, including everything we put in the application. Um, so the earliest possible start of construction would be end of next year. It's more than likely it'll be end of twenty twenty-five, just based on that regulatory regulatory approval timeline. It's more realistic, I like to say. Um, the regulatory approval timeline, as well as supply chain issues within the industry are. Pretty intense, so. Uh, the operating life of a solar asset is thirty-five to forty years. Our CUP link is twenty-five years. Evergy does understand that. The estimated new property tax revenue for township, school districts and the county. Over that twenty-five years is estimated to be over seventy-five million, and that does not, that's not inclusive in any pilot payment. So, a little bit more about this project specifically. There are, um, it's it's a very flat site. Um, there are several hundred of acres of. Private farm land that have agreed to either lease or sell. Your question was how many acres are um available for purchase? By the project, a hundred and eighty-five acres approximately are purchased. The rest of the one thousand one hundred and three acres are leased. Um, so that's eight hundred, I can't do math with my head, I'm not going to pretend. Um, there's um no environmental or cultural impacts anticipated by the project. We've done extensive research into that, um, threatened and endangered species studies have been conducted. We also have habitat corridors and wildlife corridors going throughout the project. Um, there's how these work, they have, I just, we listed kind of what is included in a solar project. For those who don't know, there's an electrical collection system that's run underground. Um, to bring all of the energy into one location. It's got a project substation, is what we call it. It's kind of a mini substation next to the Midland substation across the road from it. So that Midland substation is where that energy is coming onto the grid. So there will be no large overhead transmission lines that will need to be built for this project. Um, we propose gravel access roads, as well as wildlife-friendly fencing. And vegetative screening for adjacent neighbors. Um, we propose diverse native grasses and wildflower vegetation. Site-wide, um, and Ashton is going to get into more of the specifics of what that looks like, as well as the agrivoltage. Okay, I did, fingers. One more question. Um, so the shorter length of the CUP versus the life length of the leases. The leases are forty years long, so that is the typical life cycle of the um solar project. But they understand and everyone understands that the CUP is um twenty-five years. So they would have to reapply for a shorter period, um, or renegotiate a lease.
All right. So, um, the common question that we get asked is why here? Why not there? Why not there? Why not over there? Um, and so, uh, we at Savion have a very robust GIS department. We have dedicated individuals that do GIS work day in, day out. And I'm sorry, GIS stands for Geographic Information Systems. Uh, I actually started in GIS, um, and out of grad school, um, twenty fifteen, working on the sighting team, so looking statewide. De- each state, each market, what's the best site in the state? Um, so took that concept and applied it here with Douglas County and said, okay, well, what are the alternatives in Douglas County? And so for the first round of suitability constai- constraints, we essentially took the county and we removed any parcel that had a residential structure. Or was less than twenty acres in size, uh, any FEMA flood zones, uh, large, you know, large areas of FEMA flood zones were removed. Uh, so think like the water suburb valley. Um, slope's greater than eight percent, so if it's too steep, basically it's uneconomic to to put solar panels on those areas. Uh, areas with large contiguous blocks of tree cover, so think Baldwin Woods, South Town. Uh, is it a, in a conservation area? So Conservation Easements, USGS man- man- manages a database. Called a protected areas database. It's a great resources guide, pulling from state level, federal level, local level. Um, and then, most importantly, is it more than a mile from existing high voltage transmission lines? That's what the HV is for, is high voltage, just spell that out. Um, that's really important for two, two main reasons. One, um, it's really expensive to build transmission lines. They range anywhere from a million to do two million dollars a mile to build. And two, they are wildly, wildly. So. From there, once we, and there's images to go along with this in the following slides. So from there, then we created uh alternative boundaries throughout the county. Uh, with using groupings of contiguous parcels that amounted to approximately eleven hundred acres, or the size of Kansas Sky project. Uh, from there, then we evaluated each of those boundaries, uh, using the following metrics, which were the average slope, uh, percent floodplain, percent tree cover. The amount of prime farmland and structures within a thousand. Um, for those that may not be intimately familiar with the regulations, uh, there is a five percent grading limit. Uh, in the regulation, so if there's a lot of slope on the site, there's a higher likelihood that that area wouldn't be unusable. Or would require significant amounts of grading and. Uh, it's either with stormwater control, erosion, um, difficulty in revegetation, so. So what does it actually look like? So starting from the top left, moving to the right. On top row, that first screenshot is uh looking at the county with the tax parcels with residences. And twenty acre parcels are smaller. Next image. Can y'all see my cursor? Yeah, so the next image is excluding FEMA flood zone A, AE, AE floodway, AH. Those are the regulated floodways in Douglas County. Uh, excluding areas with significant slope. On the third image, on the fourth image, excluding areas with significant tree cover. On the fourth, excluding areas with conservation areas. Now, on the fifth one, you'll see a dramatic decrease in the potentially buildable area in Douglas County. Those are the areas that are within one mile of existing high voltage transmissions. So as you can see, going from bottom left to the next image, there's a dramatic drop in what's available for a solar project. So when you're thinking in your mind like, oh, I know Jim down in southern Douglas County, he's got a bunch of flat land out there, why don't we put it out there? You know, marginal farmland, or it's been overgrazed, or whatever the reason may be, that I think that's a good spot. It might not be close to high voltage transmission. So the orange circles in the bo- in the next image are identifying the eleven other alternative sites that we evaluate. And then on the last image in the bottom right is looking at Kansas Sky project, using those zoomed in, all those metrics. To show you that our site is a suitable site based on these considerations. And I will say that these considerations are not arbitrary. They're based on the environmentally sensitive lands that are regulated in the cattle. So looking um at a project level, uh, from left to right, you've got the Kansas Sky Energy Center. In the middle is the median, so in breaking, ranking each alternative from top to bottom. Uh, one being good, twelve being bad, we're providing Kansas Sky, the median rank, and then the alternate rank. So as you can see, Kansas Sky is very green, which means that is very flat. That's probably not surprising to anybody in this room. Looking at the alternate site, the worst rank, uh, yellow, red is bad. So average slope of three point seven percent, and you can see that it's property of the land kind of standing out in that background. Moving on to FEMA, so again, bottom left, uh, none of the project areas located in the regulatory floodway, regulatory fringe. Uh, compare that for the the lowest rank, and I'm sorry, Kansas Sky Energy ranked the the best site. As in it has zero percent land within the regulated FEMA zone. Looking at the worst, there is about thirteen point six percent. Next up is tree covered. So again, Kansas Sky Energy Center ranked second out of twelve, because there is point zero two percent tree coverage. And you can just kind of see it in the north central part of the project. And to be clear, uh, we did delineate that in our site plans, agreed to not remove any of those trees. And the worst was, uh, tree covered twenty-three point two percent. Prime farmland, and again, I I really appreciate the discussion that was happening earlier on, how do we? How do we uh evaluate and characterize soils that's, you know, beyond prime farmland or class one, two, this is. There's a lot of complexity there, and it's important to um. To recognize that, but for the sake of this conversation and for, you know, what we've been hearing in public conversations, wanted to put this on there. So, uh, prime farmland, uh, for those who don't know, is a designation, uh, in the Soil Survey, the RCS Soil Survey. Was done nineteen seventy-four, um, identifying, uh, farmland. There's also a class one, two designation, which is the soil capability class, and those are two distinct classifications. Uh, prime farmland is what we hear about most frequently. Um, I'd be more than happy to talk to the specific statistics of class one and class two soils as it relates to this project. Uh, those, uh, there is a graphic in our application that provides those statistics, provides enough data. Um, so again, uh, Kansas Sky, the score was seven out of twelve, so definitely not our best attribute. We're scoring one or two on every other metric. This is by far like the most concerning. It's something that we recognize and why we put such a high importance on our agricultural. But, that's to say that there are still other sites out there that have higher slope or greater slopes. They have more floodplain, they have more trees, they have, um, other things that, you know, when you're looking at a holistic picture of. Utility scale, solar projects in Douglas County, right? It's important to keep all those attributes in mind. And then, uh, structures, so, um, Microsoft has used artificial intelligence to, um, basically identify every structure in the US. Uh, they don't classify them, um, so while we know which structure is a residence, uh, within our project area, it would be. Kind of waiting in our favor to say that we have a certain number of residences versus looking at other sites where we haven't gone through and identified every single residence. Uh, but as you can see, when you look at the number of structures, uh, we ranked number one out of twelve. Uh, so the median there in the middle, you can see the kind of orange dots, those are highlighting the different structures. So that's what the median site looks like in the county, and then the worst site, um, is just adjacent to Lawrence. See, there's a lot of structures on the west side, but also significant amount within and around the project. So. As I mentioned, agrivolt- or uh, prime farmland, uh, was something that we recognized both in conversations with the community and in. An analysis like this, that's something that really needs to be addressed. Um, it's in the regulations, it's priority for the Food Policy Council, it's priority for the community. Um, so I'm going to dive into agrivoltage now. So Savion as a company has a substantial experience in agrivoltage. We have a director of agrivoltage. Uh, she's a former farmer, or a current farmer, I guess, still. Um, based out of Ohio, um, she has been working with Ohio State University for a few years now. Uh, she had the idea, when she heard about agrivoltage, that she wanted to try it on her farm. So she built a small array and started doing her own experiments without alfalfa, figuring out, does it grow better on? You know, the eastern side or the western side and the middle, how does it compare with like my regular alfalfa crop? And fast forward a couple of years, Ohio State University is involved, and they recently received a DOE Department of Energy grant. For uh farming in between the rows, uh, for one point six million dollars, so substantial research into agrivoltage. That research is going to happen on a project Savion is building right now, uh, in Ohio, and there will be farming in between the rows of alfalfa. Forty acres. So then, looking at the industry a little more broadly, um, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. Um, has a great pro- program called Inspire, and I've got the acronym somewhere in my notebook, but I'm not. Trying to recite it from memory. Um, it's a clearinghouse, if you will, of existing research, existing data, best practices. On agrivoltage and, uh, one of them, so it's innovative solar practices integrated with rural economies and ecosystems. So one of the the assets that they have that they manage is this web map. Um, I'd be happy to provide the link to anybody that would like it, where you can select different types of agrivoltage. That are being done across the country, so you can see there's crop production, habitat grazing, greenhouses. So as an example to give you an idea of where we're at throughout the US, selected all those and selected for a project that was greater than ten megawatts. There are a lot of agrivoltage, uh, research projects and pilot projects happening at that sub-ten megawatt scale. Uh, but there's, there, there's limited agrivoltage that are happening at a larger scale. And so I just want to put agrivoltage into context for those that might not be familiar. A lot of people have seen, uh, Jack's Solar Garden, which is a really cool project out of the front, which they're in Monmouth, just south of the city. Um, I actually had the opportunity to go there, uh, about a month ago for a workshop, and. Um, they're doing, uh, research with Arizona State University on, uh, crop production. Uh, so, you know, I say, especially crop production, they're doing, uh, uh, a small pilot project with herbs for a local. Apothecary, you know, like essential oils and those, those kind of things. Um, and they're also doing grazing, and they're also doing ecosystem services research with Colorado State. That property is seven acres, so when you see those pictures, it's, it can get you really excited. But it's important to understand like the scale of what's happening there. So yeah, and I think their just, their energy production is about, um, their energy production is around a one megawatt on that site. So, going from the national level, um, into the regs at Douglas County, so. I don't blame you if your eyes plays over, but I do want to take the time to kind of go through, uh, four definitions in the regulations. Um, so I'm going to read these verbatim, um, so forgive me. Uh, but so agrivoltage is a solar energy conver- conversion system that includes the dual use of the. Combining agriculture in a solar energy conversion system. The most common types of agrivoltage facilities include the growing crops, providing with pollinators or grazing. These agricultural activities occur underneath and surrounding the panels or the modules. Uh, and then this next section is related to vegetation, and when we're referring to vegetation, it's vegetation across the site. Uh, the system shall, not may, but shall be designed to accommodate concurrent use of the land for. Livestock grazing, bro crops, or other agri- uh, agrivoltage uses. Or contain a diverse array of native grasses and herbs for native habitat under and between the rows of solar. Next, um, this is something that will be meaningful in the next few slides. So other elements, and this is related to, again, the agrivoltage, uh, and vegetation management requirements. Other elements that may be included in this plan include, but are not limited to collaborative research on cropping systems, ecosystems. Coexisting with solar facilities for carbon sequestration. Or land access and board training for beginning farmers for underrepresented groups in farming. And then lastly, uh, related to the reviews, uh, the solar facility shall be reviewed for compliance with. Standards of conditional experiment one year after release of certificate of occupancy, every five years thereafter through the life, the conditions. So what are we doing? Um, and because agrivoltage is really difficult, uh, for a lot of people to conceptualize. Uh, I really tried hard to make it, um, as digestible as possible, so if I've missed anything from this book, please. Feel free to ask me later. Um, but taking a tiered approach, so from broad scale to a more narrow scale. So tier one would be site-specific monarch CCA pollinator vegetation, uh, and that would be for the entire site. So it's similar to CRP for those familiar with CRP. Uh, CRP has a CP forty-two pollinator habitat. So it's similar to C R P for those familiar with C R P. Uh, C R P has a C T forty-two pollinator habitat program. Um, but our three species mixes are, uh, more diverse. They require nine, uh, flowering species. I think we range between ten and twenty and one seed mix. Uh, we have three different seed mixes, one that's intended for wildlife corridors that are typically more wet. One for inside the project where there's, uh, shorter vegetation and the third is for drier areas that are outside. Brothers. Um, and real quickly, so the monarch C C A program, uh, is a, uh, nationwide program that's, uh, public-private partnership between, uh, departments of transportation and utilities, uh, to essentially establish monarch habitat on, uh, lands that would otherwise be, you know, mowed or, um, you know, not used for a higher investment purpose. So that's tier one is the monarch C C A pollinator vegetation across the entire site. Tier two, uh, the acreage is still to be determined based on the R F P, mention this in a second. Uh, so for details on what that grazing would look like, um, we have our grazing management plan in our C U P application. Uh, we just today were able to get the full C U P application on our website. So it's currently live and available for everybody to look at. I've got the link later in this slide deck. Um, there was some confusion about application materials and what was a draft and what was final. And so like this helps clear that up. Also, as Mary mentioned, uh, there's that back and forth between staff based on comments, um, and updates. So any updates would also be added to the website. We'll put a little note in parentheses that it's been updated, updated eleven-six twenty-two. Um, so with the R F P, so grazers would be eligible to participate in vegetation management R F P by ever G that meet minimum qualifications. Um, and then the next tier is agricultural take research. Uh, so this is a really unique opportunity, I feel, um, given our proximity to, you know, several research universities, depending on how well broadly you look, but then also like the, the scale of local agricultural production that have in the community, um, along with, uh, some of the existing programs. So like Common Ground comes to mind. Uh, in their incubator farm. So the agricultural, agricultural take research area would be up to fifty acres, um, awarded to up to three parties and would encourage collaboration with youth research universities and provide opportunity for emerging farmers. Um, so another question that we get often is, well, how do we know ever G is going to fall through? And Mary mentioned like the regulatory requirements, but I think it's also worth highlighting, uh, some of Evergy's track record related to these type of efforts. So, um, the monarch C C A program, as I mentioned, uh, Evergy has, was an early participant in that, in the early working group when that was being developed. And Evergy has committed to conserving over twenty thousand acres for this program. Um, current, as of the latest, uh, report, they have the third highest number of monarch, third highest number of monarch C C A acres managed by an electric utility company in the nation. Grazing, um, this might come as a surprise, but Evergy is not new to grazing, uh, on existing assets. So, um, you know, with existing thermal assets, uh, so full firepower plants, uh, there is adjacent land that is owned by the utility that is, you know, rented out to farmers and rented out to grazers. So while they don't have explicit experience working with a sheep grazer on a solar farm, they do have experience working with farmers and ranchers on their property. Um, and then lastly, with the agricultural take research, uh, Evergy for the past couple of years has had their hometown grant program. Uh, if you Google search hometown grant, you get an idea of what they've done with those, uh, programs. And then just quickly again, highlighting the required, uh, one-year review after a certificate of occupancy and then the five-year reviews thereafter until then. Um, up here on the top left, you've got the website, our website with, uh, the full URL to get to the C U P documents. Our contact information and at the bottom left, uh, the address for our project office.
Questions?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Just for quick running time notes, I'm going to run this until about twenty-five and I need five minutes for the food policy council so that they can vote to make a working group to write a memo, putting together this information. Is that correct?
I don't think, if we're gonna, if you're gonna bring it back to next month, I don't think you need to vote.
We don't need to vote? We can just make a working group?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we don't need time to vote. We will now take the rest of the time for questions from food policy council members. If I can, I will also integrate questions from the public. Thank you. Okay. Food policy. I've got Suzie. Please go ahead.
Um, I just had a question. Uh, I have two questions actually. Uh, but first off, I do want to commend them on their seed profile. It is, looks amazing, um, as far as planting for pollinators. My first question is, will you be getting a highly erodible land determination from N R C S on the properties? Um, and my other question was about the, what you're going to be using for, uh, invasive species control.
Sure. Uh, I apologize, Suzie. I'm not familiar with the highly erodible land termination. Um, maybe you could fill us, fill me in a little bit more?
Yeah. And what it is, is it determines whether or not the soil is highly erodible. Uh, N R C S does a study. It doesn't really take too long of a period of time, really, once you submit the application. Um, and they'll tell you if it's highly erodible, if you have erosion issues on that property.
And that's, is that a pre-construction or post-construction?
Um, I would, I don't think it's required by the city or the county. I was just wondering if you're going to do that. Most farmers will have an H E L determination done on their property. Um, it just helps them manage the property better as far as what to plant and how to stop erosion.
Um, I will take an action items follow-up with our landowner and see if they happen to have, you said it was an A G L?
H E L. A highly erodible land determination?
Got it. Um, and I asked pre-construction versus post-construction because currently ninety-eight percent of the site is in corn and soybean rotation. So going from corn and soy to the, the native mix, I think there's a highlight that the erodibility is kind of decreased significantly.
Right. Yeah. It's just to stay on top of things. And then also if it is determined as highly erodible, N R C S would probably go out, uh, every once in a while and monitor to make sure that, you know, gullies aren't expanding, to make sure that the top soil is, is, uh, staying in place more, which it probably will with the pollinators and the grasses, but, um, it's always good to have some, um, some management of soil loss.
Yeah. And something that I didn't dive into much and I'll be brief, um, but the, the reduction in storm water quantity is something that was really impactful when we ran our storm water report. We found that, you know, in a ten-year, uh, twenty-four hour storm event, we were looking at somewhere around thirty-six percent reduction in storm water quantity. So again, I think that would also, uh, further support that there would be less chance of erosion. But yeah, I will, I will. Um, and then to your second question, um, around, uh, noxious and invasive weed control, is that correct?
Right. Yeah. Cause once you start introducing your, uh, your pollinators and your grasses, you know, the cerise is going to creep in for more and you know what I mean?
Yeah, um, and field bindweed and thistles and, uh, yeah, there's, there's definitely a high probability of having noxious weeds. And so to your, to your question, you know, what, how would we manage that? So, you know, the traditional way is to use herbicide. Um, you know, most farmers, you know, use herbicide to control weeds. Um, there is a recommendation, uh, from the public to, uh, court or from, I'm sorry, we've had a lot of comments. I'm trying to recall it. Uh, there was, there was a comment that we should coordinate with the noxious weed department at the county. Um, obviously have no objection to doing something like that. Uh, it's always best to use local expert knowledge. Um, you know, when available, the seed mixes were reviewed and commented by, um, the Kansas Biological Survey as an example. We're more than happy to do that, that type of coordination. Um, so in the vegetation management plan, it speaks to, uh, herbicide application and that it should be very limited in use via spa spraying. Uh, so there wouldn't be broad, uh, broad spraying of herbicides. Um, and ideally there would be another alternative method, uh, besides chemical treatment. Uh, one example that comes to mind is the potential for sheep grazing. Sheep grazing is one way of controlling, uh, weed pressure. Um, another is having a good diverse, well-established native vegetation to help control. But there is always going to be those, those invasive weeds that will still some, somehow.
Question in the room from one of our council members, Dietrich?
Follow-up on the certain land use. I think you said it's currently rotation of corn and soybean.
At ninety-eight percent, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
And are you aware that there's current, current use of herbicides to control?
Yes.
Could one argue so much of the erosion that by planting native grasses and porbs, that you actually would reduce the amount of herbicide application?
Without a doubt, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have an understanding or an estimate of the yields of that corn and soy currently?
Do not.
Okay. You thought, did you have one?
I was just going to suggest that Scott may have some idea about yield.
I will turn to the, I will try and turn to the public after I get through a few more council members. Ben?
So I have two, uh, the depth of the lines that you put in for the electrical substations that are in the system, how deep?
Typically, um, and it's not all over. It's very specific, um, but they're around three feet, uh, three to four feet deep. Yeah.
And Ashen, I mean, I appreciate the comprehensive of the things. So these are kind of additional questions. Ashen, you worked in the G I S stuff before. If you, um, it's remarkable how much high voltage transmission lines, like when you said a million or two, that's crazy. If you were to increase the size of that constraint, let's say two miles, to what degree, it was clearly the strongest constraint against your map. To what degree would that increase the breadth of properties that might be, uh, good for Kansas Sky Energy and how would they, how would that move Kansas Sky Energy's rank, you know, ratings? I mean, it might be willing to trade two million dollars in tax benefits or something like that. I mean, right? The value constraints.
Yeah. So, uh, how much it would change, I, I would be guessing, um, you know?
So you guess that plane with those constraints?
Uh, no. So the, the one mile is, is about right for being able to site a project without needing to construct a high voltage transmission line because you can do it within the site. Uh, so we could look at it, um, and yeah, I mean, that's possibly a conversation we have is like, you know, is the public willing to have high voltage transmission lines for the sake of, uh, alternative locations? Um, it's, I think it's also important to note that, uh, what was not included in this analysis, but is very critical to what is a feasible site or not, is interconnection process and what capacity exists on the transmission grid. So, uh, I think we filed our transmission air connection study into twenty-twenty-one. Um, and we're looking at getting results, final results, maybe back and.
Yeah, we got our first results. So I'll speak to that a little bit. It's okay. Uh, so we got our first results and they were positive, um, but we are.
Sorry, can you just give me a layman?
Yes. So, uh, in order to put your electricity onto the grid, you have to have capacity there. So there has to be, there has to be available space for your energy to go onto the grid without, you can do upgrades, they cost money essentially. So what we got, we got a result that said there was capacity and this was the estimated cost it would take to put that energy on the grid. And so they, it goes through four study phases before that's final and you sign an agreement that says, yes, we can put energy on the grid and this is the cost. And that's at the Southwest Power Pool this level. So Evergy is a member of Southwest Power Pool. So it's even bigger than Evergy. Um, so it's a regional transmission operator. And so that energy, we have to make sure there's capacity. So there's availability at that location for the energy to come on at a low cost because if it's, let's say forty-two million dollars, is there enough energy being produced to, for that to make sense? No. So it has to be a low cost of entry at that location.
Sorry. So the geographic location determines how many, whether or not the system has the ability, capacity for electrons?
Yes.
So like if you put one in South Douglas County, the capacity might not be the same.
Correct. Because.
It's also connected to the Southwest power.
Because of the type of, so our location is right next to the Lawrence Energy Center. So there's capacity there because there's more generation that can be put on that line and less being used at the Lawrence Energy Center.
Something if I have enough lines to run like another.
Exactly.
And if you think about a whole segment that runs like the full width of Douglas County, you know, every time there's a substation that creates a new segment of what is, what the capacity is on that segment. So if you've got a, a substation in southwest Douglas County and one in the center and one in the east, you're going to have different capacities on that same exact line in between each substation.
Real quick follow-up before I go to Margie. So does that, can you remind us, is energy storage part of this proposal?
No, energy storage is not part of this proposal. It was originally proposed, um, but based on feedback from the community that it was just too new of a technology and nobody could get quite comfortable with that. We decided to remove it. So there is no energy storage as part of this. It is just agricultural take energy.
Okay. I was going to go to Margie, but it looks like you lost her for a moment.
Um, we're talking about the distance to transmission lines. And I'm wondering how this project planning process, I'm assuming you're looking just at the existing transmission lines?
Correct. But well, actually, sorry to interrupt. We do include proposed and planned ones.
Okay. So does that include proposed ones for the wind energy project?
No, it'd have to be.
Is there a way that looking at the wind and the solar together that?
So it's a great idea.
What additional transmission system, why not plan for both of those to share a system?
It's a great idea in theory. In reality, that wind transmission line that they could build would be built for that exact capacity and not for any additional capacity. So our substation where we're putting our collector, we're collecting all the energy into our project substation to just do the jaunt across the road. That jaunt is going to contain just enough for our project. We can't have additional lines coming in. Does that make sense? So the wind energy proposed that could be coming, it has just enough for the wind energy to get from its project location to its connecting location.
Yeah, that kind of sounds like building two parallel driveways instead of having one driveway.
It's by the Southwest Power Pool. There's no way the Southwest Power Pool would allow, unless it was the same company doing the exact same type of energy or not type of energy, the exact same amount of energy. So if you had a hundred fifty-nine megawatt wind project that was coming here, I'm not suggesting that, just to be clear. But let's say we were also proposing a wind project, we could utilize our existing one because we're the same company, same project, same size. That'd be the only way the R T O, Regional Transmission Operator, S P P, Southwest Power Pool, would allow us to do that.
Okay.
Margie, are you prepared to ask your question?
Yeah, sorry. I got bumped off Zoom here at home. Uh, and I don't know exactly. I missed a little gap, but it was, I think partly a follow-on to Ben's question about the geographic determinations, you know, and evaluating all these different things. So I think it was covered as far as, you know, well, I, I want to thank you guys for going through all the maps and kind of showing the reason to see that process you went through, but, um, as far as, you know, looking at the cost comparison of the median site or this existing site you have, I wanted to understand a little bit more about what factors went in for the, the energy part, like you're saying, the. what factors went in for the, the energy part, like you're saying, the distribution. I think it, it has to do mostly with the substations is what I caught just before I was bumped off of Zoom, but anyway.
The substation as well as we have willing private landowner who is agreeable to sign a lease with us.
Uh-huh, and as far as, you know, having, because it looked like that median site had some other very positive attributes to it. But I don't know, how did it compare as far as for the, the substation distribution factor, like getting the power online on grid?
Yeah, so you can run what are called power flow studies, but that's something that's done by a third-party consultant and literally costs fifty thousand dollars plus to run.
For each location.
It was outside the scope of our team's capacity.
I'd like to take the opportunity if I can, so I don't want to take two or three more questions. Ben, if you've got one, then maybe one or two from the public, and then I want to remind the Food Policy Council that at this time, we do not need to vote to form the working group. So we will not take a vote for that, and instead, what we will do is that working group will present a draft of this memo at the next Food Policy Council meeting.
Follow Ben?
Yes. Ben?
Forty acres, the example site from Ohio. Is it the largest site and/or site that will be built that may be going in before this site for scale for an agri vol takes project?
That, to our knowledge, yes.
For crop production?
Yeah.
But there are larger ones for grazing production that Savion already has.
Not for Savion, but for other companies.
Are there any this size for grazing that already exists?
Yes.
There are.
Okay.
And I could find them with this spider map.
Yeah, I could, I could narrow it down for you.
But crop production wise, there are none larger than forty acres.
Correct.
Dietrich?
Clarification on the work group. Has the, has the composition of work group already been established yet? Yes, when?
It was established last Thursday?
Yes, during a meeting of all the chairs.
So outside of the review of the full policy.
Correct.
Correct.
But are we in a position to say who's on that work group?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Oh, thank you.
If necessary, we can also, again, because this draft will be brought before the full council, there will be opportunities for comment on the memo, in addition to, if necessary, additional comments being brought while the memo is being drafted by simply emailing me or Connie.
Chairs.
Chairs.
So follow up on the, so you were asked, couldn't you ask a question? Are you allowing comments on this before draft is generated?
I believe so, as part of the generation of the draft, yes. Just so we have a limited number of people work on instead of trying to gather everyone and then need more of it.
I wanted to ask Savion if they have looked at other counties for citing this. Or are you, why Douglas County, I guess?
Yeah, so part of the reason we chose Douglas County is because the Lawrence Energy Center did announce its retirement, part of it is retiring, and so that puts this project in what's called an energy community because of the IRA, and so that is a positive attribute on the project. It gets a tax break for that reason, so that's one reason that we looked. If, we looked at all of Kansas and where their energy communities. We also had, we have other projects within Kansas. None that are going through public comment yet. Right now, I have one that will start very soon as well in Wilson County, Kansas. The biggest problem Kansas has with renewable energy is the transmission grid. So the capacity that I was speaking about, that transmission grid is very limited. And so the project that I'm going public soon with is in Wilson County, Kansas. It's public enough, and that project, we started that transmission study in twenty seventeen. And we just now are going public with that project, so having Evergy on board while we're going through this public project is really integral in why this project's moving forward a little more accelerated, but also at the same time, like on the right project path. So why else did we choose Douglas County is because we had willing landowners, we had the transmission capacity, we had the, we looked at other areas, there wasn't anywhere that was suitable for solar with the parameters that we already described. Oh, so yeah, we do, we are working on the project in DeSoto, Sunflower Solar Project. It's on the Old Army Ammunitions Plant, so we are looking other areas as well. And then we also have MCI, which is technically in Kansas, or technically in Missouri, but we're working on it with Evergy as well. So we have longstanding relationship with Evergy.
Before I officially adjourn the Food Policy Council meeting, I'd like to say that I will be available for any members of the public who have concerns that would like to be brought before the working group, so I will be available to, for you to come to me. I'd like to turn to, maybe get one question from the public. Is anyone ready?
If everybody feels comfortable.
Okay, if everyone feels comfortable, we might go a little over, but I'm trying to be very appreciative.
I just wanted to make a comment for you all to consider.
Could you speak a little louder just for the owl? Thank you.
I'll do my best. When you talk about the distance from the transmission lines, that was something that we did talk about. And we were encouraging, we hoped, being closer to transmission lines, and the reason for that is it doesn't require new high transmission lines, which are totally out of the jurisdiction of the county. That's Kansas Corporation Commission and resulting in the domain, which Karen is still here. Her family experienced that for the one that runs across the south part. So we were hoping that these projects would be closer, so we wouldn't have that option come up. Another large company that's been looking at doing solar in the area doesn't think they can do it with our regulations, because there are so many regulations. We, you have a company here that's done its best to comply with all of those. And it's really gratifying to see how closely they're attempting to follow all of those regulations. But the final decision, who knows, or where you're gonna fall in agri vol takes. Like Mary said, it's experimental, we couldn't define it at the time. There wasn't anything beyond, we were only able to talk to sheep grazers, really. And hope for culmination, so we're hoping for, to encourage experimentation to. So that's something that this, this body could be involved with down the road is evaluating how this is working and what other options are out there. There's plenty of information from other countries. So it's, it's kind of exciting. Whether this is the right place or not, that's gonna be the planning commission and the accounting commission, so. But they are following all the, all the rules and they're very strict. As they will tell you, and if you look at the list in the rules, all the plans that have to be submitted. It's very comprehensive, including free well water testing by people within a certain distance, what's actually in their well water now. So if anything comes up in the future, it can, it's easier to determine where it came from. So there's lots in there. There's a lot more than just the agri vol takes. They can't have an impact. So I encourage you to kind of at least browse through that and see what all the requirements are and look at what the plan is. I'm certainly gonna look through it, now that it's all up.
We did put the, the regulations on our website as well as the first button next to our CUP documentation. It is the full county code, chapter twelve, so I also put in parentheses to start on page one.
Cody, is there time for one? Oh, sorry.
I'll, I'll, Dietrich in the new, and then I'll try and adjourn the official.
Yeah, maybe we can ask our presenters if they feel comfortable. There's a lot of.
Right, so Margie will do Dietrich in the new. I'll ask the presenters at that point whether or not they feel comfortable hanging around a little bit, but then I'll at least let the official business be concluded. But Dietrich, please.
This comment that I'm offering would be for the working group and deliberation before they start drafting, and I wanna honor Nancy Thelman's point about this year, which Food Policy Council was created. I also wanna praise the great efforts that went into the food system plan. It's truly thoughtful, and as Nancy said, this spawned other Food Policy Councils to also generate thoughtful plans. So that's my knowledge, the plan is silent on the generation of renewable energy, understandably. So I would, but yeah, here we are with this difficult choice. And I might also add, as a person who teaches adaptation to climate change and teaches mitigation of climate change, that we, because of our delay and deliberations, have presented ourselves as a society, global society, with an array of bad choices. We dithered for way too long, and here we are stuck right here in Douglas County with, I might add, a bad trade-off. But I don't want to rely upon the food system plan exclusively to guide any draft that we come up as a Food Policy Council, because it is the sound of one hand clapping. There is an arguably just as important issue on the other side, which represents the second hand. And I would recommend that we at least explore the possibility of those two hands clapping together that captures the full trade-off in play. That is, we would love to protect prime farm land, that's one, that's two type soils, but at the same time, we as a society are, are needing to stabilize our climate, and remember, it is one of the deepest paths.
And I'd like to make a quick, as the Climate Action Plan is working through their drafts, it is also worthwhile to consider how this, how our considerations might also affect what recommendations the Food Policy Council makes to the Climate Action Plan. Point taken. Margie?
Yes, and I, I appreciate that, Dietrich, in recognizing that something that hasn't been spoken of tonight, and maybe it's a question to Savion there, to Ashton, and so on, about the environmental costs and impacts, and I think that, as wonderful as solar energy appears at the surface and use installed and bright shiny panels and everything like that, there's a very dark and hidden side of the environmental cost on the other side of the world, to the mining and the toxic metals that are in these panels, cadmium, tellurium. Very energy intensive to extract from another part of the world that causes climate change, pollution, whatever you want to call it, releasing the carbon and hydrofluoric acids and stuff. And so while there's this, you know, like you say, Dietrich, this dual kind of decision, difficult decision, I, I guess I can't, I can't come to grips myself with recognizing that some other part of the world, there's being polluted with toxic metals. And then, this is also something that's not been spoken of at all, is the disposal of these panels. And so that was my other last question is, what are the disposal plans for these panels after their life use? They end up in landfills and they leach. And so they can hardly be recycled. And therefore, they end up in our backyard, in our environment, and having land on the river bottom where I have a well and I draw from the water coming just east of this site, I'm very concerned about that. And I want to know what, what there is to say about that, so.
Yeah, this is kind of three or four-part question, so I'll take it for a bit and then Ash will take it. But, so to be clear, cadmium telluride is a very specific type of panel, and no panel has been decided. We don't know what exact panels are being utilized. We did propose for solar modules. Canadian solar modules, I knew it was one of the two, sorry. Canadian solar modules, and so those modules are not cadmium telluride, they are polysil, mono polysilico. So cadmium telluride aside, that's not an issue, but we are working and Evergy is working to get American-made equipment wherever possible. There is another tax benefit for doing that, so it's not just incentivized because it's, there's a tax benefit. They're not just looking for the best quality or not, sorry. That's a lot. There's a, there's a lot of reasons to go American on renewable energy, specifically panel manufacturers. So that is something that Evergy is looking into. They can't commit at this time because there's no CUP, we don't have an engineering procurement construction company decided. So part of that, you can't get the equipment until you figure out, can you build there? So that's why there's no specific module. There's module proposed, but it could be changed, so. As for recycling, Ash will take that.
Yeah, so the main industry organization for solar is the Solar Energy Industry Association. They have several working groups, one of them is the PV recycling, photovoltaic recycling group. I sit on that working group. I can tell you that this is one of the top priorities for the industry, is figuring out how to scale the recycling. Recycling and photovoltaic panels exist today. The SCIA website has a list of those manufacturers. I would call out, and we have no, no association with them yet, I'm hoping we will. Savion is a company, but SolarCycle, their first production facility is based out of Odessa, Texas. You know, it's something that I think surprised the wind industry, became an issue way too quick, and they were kind of caught behind the eight ball. And so the solar industry is trying to be more proactive and work to, to do the research and development and to, to scale it where possible. And then as far as, will these panels specifically end up in a landfill or go to to recycling? Again, that's gonna be determined, you know, on the final panels that are selected. First solar as an example is somebody that, you know, we've worked to procure, do large procurements with, and they have a take-back program where they guarantee that in the light of the product, they take it back to recycle it. Increase the circularity of those components. Last thing with regard to leaching, so every panel before it could go into landfill would need to go through a T-clip, which is I forgot. I'm sorry, TCLP T-clip test, which essentially determines any toxicity. So toxic characteristic leaching procedure to determine if there are any potential contaminants that need to be treated, especially before it goes into the landfill or any other waste disposal. If it did have those, it would have to go into a regulated facility designed to avoid any potential groundwater contamination.
So I've got, I don't even know the quick follow-ups, unfortunately. So two. One, we've already discussed that there's going to be well water testing. In the consequence that well water is contaminated, then what? Sorry, that doesn't make sense. If, if well water is contaminated, what is the consequence? There we go.
That's, that's a tough hypothetical, so I think it would depend on the constituent, or what was determined to be the contaminant. What the baseline levels were, were there any other potential sources of contamination? When we did a, the, we do what are called a phase one environmental site assessment. It's part of our initial studies of every project. And it goes through all the, the records with EPA, county, township, to figure out if there's any potential contaminant site currently. And as an example with this site, there was a landowner who was concerned about their well water being contaminated. KDHE came out and did several groundwater tests, they did soil testing and wrote up a full report that's available to the public, I believe in some, on NRCP documents. Actually, no, I'm sorry, staff requested that we provide that. It will be in the updated documents. But to, to maybe try and answer your question, is it really depends? So as far as what could be a potential contaminant, you know, it's, it's tough when you have a landfill and a quarry and an airport and a railroad and a coal plant, all immediately adjacent to then tease out what is the potential source of contamination, but not likelihood it be traced back to like, the likelihood of each source generating that contaminant.
Okay, and then the other one was, you discussed that particularly with vegetation management, that looking for alternatives would be preferred, alternatives to spraying. So when we're talking about the plan, what does that mean for the recycling of PV panels? Does that mean that, you, you said it could be an option. Is it written that if the option is available, that it is the priority? Or is it simply something that it'd be nice if we could? How is it written currently?
Written where?
In the, in the CUP.
For recycling?
Mm-hmm, for the, for the decommissioning of the PV panels. Mm-hmm, for the, for the decommissioning of the, the PV panels.
Uh, I don't think recycling is contemplated in the regulations.
Heard, understood.
I don't know, Jim, recycling is not specifically in there, but they have to submit a decommissioning plan.
Okay.
And the county will set a bond that has to be paid, so if the company goes out of existence or is unable to pay that cost, there is a bond or insurance or some other assurance that it will be paid. Um, and that gets reviewed every five years too, as part of the five year review process to up the amount of the bond. And that's all part of what's in the code.
Thank you. I'd like to take a few moments to say, I'm really grateful to all of you for being here tonight. This is not an easy issue that is, can be, it, it hits close to home in every way. Um, so I want to thank Brianna and Ashton, it was Brianna, correct?
Yeah.
And Ashton, I wanna thank you, I wanna thank Mary Miller. Um, again, we don't need to, Connie's reminding me, um, we don't need to vote to adjourn, so all can simply step away when ready. Um, and we will continue recording any questions for those who are here. And if you have time, if not, please, we, we respect your time and we are so grateful that you spent it with us this evening. Again, thank you, everyone, and that concludes official business.
And I'd just like to thank everyone as well and, um, offer our website as well as our office. Um, it does have a lock on it for safety, so please call or text us if you want to visit. Um, unfortunately, you just can't pop in, um, it's safety reasons, so.
Public, questions?
Can you design solar installation on land that has a slope greater than five percent? Like, are you designing installations off to a block?
No.
Catcher land, grazing land?
So, um, the slope is about five percent, um, at a site in southeast Oklahoma. Um, but typically, we try and stay in that five percent range, um, just for cost reasons.
And is, is the cost a matter of the racking would need to change, or you would just need to grade that much more? Okay.
Technologically, it's possible to design these facilities with a ton of.
It's more expensive.
They can grade no more than five percent of the area. And it gets specific which area that is. But also, it's contemplated that it bogs the contours of the land because there is a way that the heights of and rise, so that you can keep it flat or cross. So, they don't have, I'm doing a panic, it'll be flat, so they're pretty close. So, that's all built in, and that's all part of the process.
So, the regulations essentially target, I mean, allow only, um, flat, essentially flat.
It also makes, we're trying, the, the regulations, we're trying not to disturb or anybody more. Maximum amount of the, of the disturbance specified in the regulations. All of it will be on the CUP and the staff report and everything else.
That kind of results in it being far.
Pardon?
We're trying, yeah, it just kind of means that that is gonna be, I mean, if you say it has to be flat or not much rain, then it's gonna be hard.
That was the problem, as looking at those maps, some of which saw most of the counties undulating. And there was, if you go onto the steep slope, onto slopes or closer to the waterways. You end up with, um, increase in possible contamination or disturbance or erosion. So, we were trying to minimize that, and when you look at the soil maps for the county, most of the counties, one or two. Um, so if we knew that it was gonna end up competing with part of it. And part of the CUP process allows all the public input, um, from all the different sources. So that the planning commission and ultimately the county commission can make the best decision about, of a particular location. And if there's a need to put in any additional requirements and protect that stuff. And like I said, uh, the, um, condition used permit goes for twenty-five years with five year reviews. So, at that time, there's another time, there are a whole public process to determine whether it should continue or should revert back to, you know, end the project. As I follow the decommissioning plan, this still is on the agricultural, who knows, all the end of that time will be done. Who knows, some people may have bought their land back, some probably still have their improvements. But then you have all those issues, so, there's a lot of unknowns, always will be. Probably anticipate most problems, it was a long process to get to that. And that's why these, when you see this whole report, it's huge. And I, there's twenty-seven exhibits and nine documents. And as, and then as for those, I'm like, um, this is gonna be a two-year, three thousand page packet for the thing.
Did I hear you correctly, you said most of the county is capability one to two?
Uh, most, uh, I mean, when we took out the slopes and we took out all the, again, the areas that were protected. Moved it away from trails and there's a lot of places that go into citing it. Which is why next era, it's a point that they can get a big large facility. Because as pointed out, you have the willing landowners, but it's not just that, actually, we all are limitations on where it can be, and then there are other things that come to the energy transition and then, and everything else. So, it's, there's a lot of limitations on where they have to go. And I don't know how many possible sites are gonna be in the penalty, that everyone will be evaluated separately. And one will not say you can go without it.
There's, but I mean, the capability one and two is about five percent of the county, something like that?
Well, one and two is six, nine thousand acres. It's one or two or a few prime soils, or different plastications on that. Different ways, like, we had soil, so that got on you in addition too. But I can't tell you what it is saying. There's an exhibit that's included, uh, on our GIS maps in our application that identified the figures. So, there's approximately five, fifty-six hundred thousand acres of class one soil in Douglas County. Douglas County's three hundred and three thousand acres, class two soils, there's, I think, sixty-four thousand acres. Prime farm land, there's a hundred and three thousand acres in the county.
I think we're dividing it to the maps I see.
I mean, that's really, that's really, I was, web soil survey. And then our CUP.
At what point did it, eleven hundred, at what point does eleven hundred acres come into it like? You know, you showed all the things about where it is, but at what stage do you go, okay, but now we need to fit a box that's eleven hundred acres?
So, the eleven hundred acres came from, that's the approximate size of our project, um, which is a hundred and fifty-nine megawatts. So, we wanted to compare apples and apples for apples and oranges. So, there were areas that could be smaller or bigger, but we wanted to make a comparison against our project, so why here?
So, let me ask you a different question, why hundred and fifty-nine, I mean, hundred and fifty-nine sounds like, like we're adding a number to me.
So, we were going to apply for a hundred and sixty megawatts, but a study that our transmission operator was, like, we've got a robust uh, subject matter expert, so Ashton is one, we have a transmission subject matter expert. And he saw that a hundred and sixty megawatts broke the model, but a hundred and fifty-nine didn't, essentially.
As a follow up to that, is that a matter of the density of the PV panels is also depending on how, what other things you're trying to account for, such as?
Five hundred foot setbacks.
Right, the setbacks, the quad light corridors. So, that also in, talks about like, okay, if you put this somewhere else with different regulations, your megawatt density would be totally different.
Yes, if we didn't have five hundred foot setbacks. Well, that's another thing about looking at other sites in the county where there's higher residential density. It's going to require more acres per megawatt, um, to achieve the same output. Because you have more, more land that is leased, but taken out of, but is used up for buffers for five hundred foot setbacks. So, that means like, if you have houses on every corner of section, similar to our project. You can fit more density on that parcel than in other parts of the county where you may have eight residences on that same section.
Was closeness to the water table considered as part of what you guys are studying on?
Where the water?
But it worked, yeah, because like where we're at, it's six to ten to be in the streets.
That's part of what the studies are to determine. I mean, it's gone out to a bunch of different agencies, it's determined, you know, what the potential are. These projects are generally just poking posts into the ground. There's no concrete support, the, the trenching is just for the wiring. And we had a debate about whether they hadn't come out or stayed in. Um, Karen, I think we said stay in, and that's why in depth. So, normally, if it goes back to be cultivated, you wouldn't patch the wiring. And we figured that'd be a mess, uh, ground to surface in the long run, instead of digging all this stuff up. And pull posts out a lot easier than, than underground tables, so. Yeah, but I know emergency management has had this, and they have, they've commented. One of the other requirements is it's gone through every, everything, every all panels, everything has to run through your emergency and, and the fire departments for comments. Um, the county will know every, every element that's in these, uh, panels. Um, the company has the, well, the operator, there's a difference between applicant and who the operator is. The oper, operator is required to provide any emergency equipment that fire medical may need to deal with any emergency and provide yearly trainings. Uh, anytime the technology might change, uh, they have to provide training, but they have to offer a training to fire medical once a year. So, we, there's all kinds of things both in there, uh, mostly to establish baselines. This is what it is now, so if there are changes, it's easier to say, did it come from the solar facility? Or did it come from some process? And that's what the water test, uh, the water table issues tend to take part of the wind, those are the topic. So, because that has a much bigger impact on what might happen. So, water tables, uh, solar, solar, because of the constant vibration and depth that it's having, the, the traffic, that'll permanent.
I have a quick question for the expertise of everyone in the room. Um, it's possible this is known and I am just way far behind. You've used the phrase highest possible use in this room. Is there actually a federal or state policy or regulatory language for what is considered highest possible use for soil, or is that just a phrase we use? Like, is there an actual prioritized list?
Yes. What is determined by looking at all of the factors?
So, it's contextual?
It's very contextual, would you agree? Mary's gone.
Yeah, Mary's gone.
Yeah, I'm, in my interest, I was told, when I had my farm ground rezoned from industrial to agricultural in nineteen ninety-seven. Douglas County Commission declared that the highest and best use of my property was agricultural. But they have subsequently declared that the property next door, which is highest, the best use is industrial. So, it's quite arbitrary and can change over time. And part of that is, you know, have we learned more about what possible uses, is conditions change?
I guess I meant also specifically in the context of row crop, specialty crop, and then those contexts. Not necessarily industrial versus agriculture, but within the framework of agriculture.
You might be starting to find it.
I know, again, it's just, it's just, you, you use the word highest possible use, what does that mean?
It means different things to vegetarians and meat eaters, so.
It depends on what factor you're thinking of. Like, if you're thinking of putting, uh, you know, a ten-story structure. Then the support element of the, the structure of the soil is more important, so it'll support that building. That's a different, higher and best use of that soil than if you're trying to grow food, which you want filled.
Right.
And fluff and.
Which I understand, it was just a matter of, again, in the context of growing things, if there was an act of regulatory or policy designation.
The highest best use of something that's prime soil would be more agricultural than putting a building on it. We're kind of in the middle around here in this discussion.
Okay, it looks like everyone is doing the.
I have to go, I apologize.
Okay, it's time, I'm really very grateful to all of you.
I'll be here all night.
Should we order pizza? Yeah, oh wait, if you need to go home, we all have to get out. Thank you, Connie, I really appreciate your support.